What a great turnout! I'm so happy that you guys are active, participating constituents here. Yay! Give yourself some respect. What a great turnout. And we're always thankful that these candidates, we're thankful for candidates, okay? Because it is not easy to be a political candidate in these times, as we know. So we really, as we can see the head nods, we really thank them, all of them, for putting their lives on hold, for stepping up to the plate to try to make the community better, and really just putting themselves out there. So we really want to give an applause to all the candidates that are here. And by the way, I always forget to do this. I am Darlene Tennis. I am on the San Jose Women's Club Board of Directors. I'm actually Diversity and Inclusion Board of Directors. So I'm going to tell you a little bit about the San Jose Women's Club here. We started in 1894, so we are celebrating our 130th years of existence. So it started during the Progressive Movement for Women across the nation in the 1890s. They started women's clubs and they worked on things like opening free libraries and children's health and juvenile justice system and so many, so many different things. Food and Drug Act, so many things that the Women's Club did. So you guys should really look at it if you have an opportunity. This beautiful building here that you are in was designed by Wolf and Higgins. It was built in 1929, and it was never a home. People always ask that. It was always a women's club. The women got together and raised a bunch of money and they built this beautiful space. They built this beautiful space for you. They built it for our community so that we could gather together to see concerts and to do forums like this and have activities and talks. And so this place is your place. And we always appreciate it, you know, when people give donations, actually. But, you know, when you're a member as well, you'll get emails and you'll see the different activities we're doing. We have an opera luncheon coming up that we all, we have since the beginning have given scholarships to San Jose State University when it was back Normal College back then. We've been giving opera scholarships and then they come and do an opera concert once a year. So we do have a luncheon coming up for that. And we have a lot of other activities. I do want to thank our partner tonight, who is San Jose Spotlight. So San Jose Spotlight does such a great job on reporting on our community. They're very cool, literally, the reporters really know, really know what's going on. And so I do want to introduce Brandon. I'm not going to be speaking or asking questions. Everyone would be happy to know. So I'm going to introduce Brandon Foe. And he came from Orange County and he was with the Voice O C over there as a reporter. And he worked on law enforcement, unhoused, community issues, and the Vietnamese community in particular. So now he's the government and politics reporter with San Jose Spotlight. And he is going to be our moderator tonight. And we also want to thank all of you that submitted questions as well. He kind of sifted through all the questions and decided what he was going to ask the candidates tonight. So we really thank you for all the input that you have given as well. So let me introduce Brandon. A big round of applause.
How are we doing tonight? Great energy. Well, you can make another round of applause for San Jose. And for the National Women's Club. So, yeah, as Darlene said, my name is Brandon Foe and I'm the government and politics reporter for San Jose Spotlight. The city's only nonprofit news organization dedicated to local, independent, and political and business reporting in the South Bay. And welcome to our San Jose City Council D3 Forum. Here are the rules for tonight's forum. For each question, we'll rotate the order for candidate responses. We have a lot of people on the stage and want everyone to be heard, so we'll be strict about time. We're going to keep time limits on responses. Each candidate will receive one minute to answer each question and 30 seconds for an optional rebuttal. If requested by the candidates, please raise your hand if you have a rebuttal or we'll just proceed to the next question. In order to keep things moving, we'll leave about 10 minutes at the end of the forum. 10 to 15, depending on how quick you kind of get to the questions, for audience questions. If you have a question to be considered, please raise your hand and someone from our team will bring you an index card right now. So, that being said, I'd like to welcome the candidates. Starting with San Jose Mayor Matt Mayham's Deputy Chief of Staff, Mr. Matthew Caballo. And then next to him, we have Planning Commissioner and Engineer Anthony Poggiros. And next to him, we have Financial Analyst and Entrepreneur Irene Smith. Next to him, we have Retired Sheriff Lieutenant Adam Duran. Next to her, I'm sorry. And I'm Chartered Salesman. Next to Adam is Phil Dolan. And last but not least, microphone is working. Last but not least, we have Latino Coalition of Silicon Valley Executive Director Gabby Chavez Lopez. All right, all right. So we won't be doing opening remarks, but I think this first question will do a good job of getting all the candidates to introduce themselves. This question is, if the mic is working, what is the biggest issue facing District 3? And name one thing you'll do to address that issue. We are going to start with you, Gabby. And if you could, pass the microphone down all the way to Anthony. Matthew has his own microphone today.
Yeah, so living in District 3, I think we all know and we've heard at the doors as we've been out talking to voters that homelessness is really, is really a big issue. And intersects with a lot of other issues that are happening in our district. If I could focus on one thing, I think the one, the one take that I would, that I would say is that making sure that, having worked in housing homelessness for many years and one thing we learned during the pandemic is that we have to tackle homelessness on both ends. Both prevention and housing solutions. Because 2,500 folks become homeless every single year. And so really being able to focus on prevention is going to be really key, especially as we're nearing a possible recession. We know that we're going to experience potentially another crisis on our streets. And so I think that that's something that prevention is our first line of defense. And so as we look at rental assistance and income protections and making sure that we preserve affordable housing, those are really clear and tried and tested strategies to keep full housing in the first place.
I think accountability is the biggest thing with the city. We need to see the city where our money is being spent, how it's being spent, and why it is being spent that way. I feel a lot of people don't trust the city no more. They don't trust the city mayor. They don't trust the city council. The city is saying one thing, but money and everything else is being spent another way. And they're directly not listening to the people on the streets, us, the people. We have a housing crisis. We have homeless crisis. And nothing the city council or the city mayor is doing is actually solving the problem or they are not even bringing solutions to the table to fix the problem in the first place. Accountability is the problem with City Hall.
Public safety is numero uno in my, from my perspective. Yes, I come from a law enforcement background, public safety for 29 years. I feel everything rises and falls to public safety. What's the use of having a beautiful house if you're getting robbed every other day? Or having a beautiful small business and people are allowed to walk in and walk out with their merchandise? I can't even go to Target right here on Coleman. I know it's outside our district, but it is in our city without facing an armed guard going into Target. And then I go in to buy a pair of socks. I have to call an employee to get a, that is a reflection of a breakdown in our city's laws. And there needs to be accountability. There, we need to make public safety back before we can... District 3 and San Jose does not deserve to have an area or a district that is public safety if people are scared to come out of their house. That is not right. You deserve better.
I agree with Gabby that our homeless situation is at a crisis point. We have to do something. We're cutting whack-a-mole with misery. And folks are now ending up in our backyards because we're cleaning the streets and the streets. This is really unfortunate for D3. The only way to address this crisis of 5,500 people who are unsheltered and living on the street is with urgency and with scale. With a large-scale shelter, convivial community housing, we can house with 10 units with this front structure. We can house people within two to five months. Except for homeless, they're in 4.5 months. With tiny homes, unfortunately, it's going to take approximately two years just to get one site going. Historically, we had an average of 130 homes per year. And that would take 42 years to actually get people sheltered. If we did five in a year, that would take 11 years to get people sheltered.
I would say that the number one issue facing San Jose is our housing affordability crisis. We know from the data that over 40% of renters in San Jose are rent burdened. And one in five renters in our city pay more than half of their income every month towards housing. Housing costs are way too high and they are burdening too many working families in our community. And critically, our housing affordability crisis is also the root of our homelessness crisis. And there will be no long-term solution to our homelessness crisis if we do not address our housing crisis. Housing also has a role to play in public safety. Because when folks do not have economic security, we are unable to get to the root causes of crime in our community. In terms of what the city needs to do, we need to focus on policies to dramatically increase housing production across all levels of affordability. That means streamlining and getting government out of the way when folks want to build new housing in our city. It means legalizing newer, cheaper forms of housing across our communities. And it means providing an incentive and an economic environment where housing can be successfully constructed there in San Jose. Thank you.
Sorry, I have my own mic because I'm a little sick today. Homelessness, of course, is the top issue on the problem everyone's got. It's certainly a very difficult and cautious city. What we need to do is double and accelerate the pace of community participation. Urgent, okay. Sorry. What we need to do is accelerate the pace in which we're building our own homes. This year alone, we have 1,000 new units completed online. And there are some barriers, there are cost prohibitions. But we need to make sure we're finding more cost-effective and faster ways to build. We can do this by focusing on the problem. There's 5,500 people on the streets and many of them are dead. And it's not only causing a cost of human survival, but on the, on the cost of, all of us are paying $60,000 per person just for them to be homeless on the streets. If we double down and accelerate the pace, if we get their homes in 60 and 70 percent, we're reducing the cost of being paid traditionally and knowing knowledge of order and control. Matthew, please help the problem.
Don't sit down just yet, Matthew.
You are the mayor's right man, Matthew. He still has not fixed the housing problem.
We are starting with you, Matthew, for this next question, which has to do with something that happened today. Oh, I'm sorry about that. Rebuttal.
So again, I focus on prevention in my, my talking points because I have not gotten into temporary shelters, solving our homelessness crisis. I think they're effective, but again, there's no one-size-fits-all solution to homelessness. And those of us that have actually worked with our homeless population know that. San Jose really needs to invest in real solutions. And again, these are just stopgaps and ultimately cost more over time. Permanent support can last up to 50 years. Thank you.
Thank you. On homelessness, I think we need a balanced approach. Yes, focus is on cost-effective ways of increasing our shelter capacity. But we need to be realistic about the limits of that approach. Shelters are not designed for long-term stays and we need to make sure we have sufficient affordable housing to move folks into when that time in a shelter is complete. And on a cost perspective, the Housing Department recently released a full report showing an increase in our shelter capacity to cover our entire unhoused population. The cost to city $234 million a year in operational expenses. And that's money that our city does not have.
On this issue, we are already spending $25 million on the homeless population that's in shelter today. As I mentioned, $60,000 per annum just for them to be on the streets. And housing charges, emergency services, and financial impact. And I'm not going to be the first one to give $5,500 million to the city saying you don't deserve a solution to the, if you don't focus streets now and see what the crisis is. And focusing on the city, we need to get it done. And we need to get whatever it's already been seen to happen.
We can have offered these people that are living on the streets unsheltered an option. And it is temporary shelter. It's first, it's instruction plus funding. The average of 48 years to build, and that's probably generous. And generally, they're 134 units per building. So if we do two buildings for every year with 134 units, it will take 21 years to get 5,500 people sheltered. That's too long.
All righty. This next question has to do with something that happened today. Mayor Matt Mayham announced a significant change to the city approach to homelessness today, saying that homeless people who refuse shelter on three occasions in new shelter areas will be arrested. If you were on this council right now, would you vote to approve the mayor's proposal? Matthew, we'll start with you. And we're going to work our way down all the way to Gabby.
Folks, this policy is all about who is smart and will be able to shelter where it's needed. We have 5,500 individuals, as I was saying, who are working on over 100. If these individuals need to treat, not to pick the services, because of their mental health, domestic insurance, and that issue, what else would we propose if you were there? There's not much else to do. Like just today, a neighbor in the park was assaulted, walking with his partner down from home. In these situations, a shelter is available. You cannot have anyone on the streets, or any excuses are open. We need to get people out, we need to go in and get them to leave. But we do so by building criminalizes and helping people off the streets more easily. One more second, we need to help people service beds. We need to make sure when the children are carrying, or when they carry a target, or listening to the voters at that, or at the justice room, to ensure there are no illegal beds to prevent people off the streets. We're going to be looking for services to leave. We cannot accept this not as a pro way of love. There's not a way to say that.
No, I would not support the mayor's proposal. I think that's bad. I do not think that criminalization is the correct approach to this problem. I think if you look at someone who's on the streets and say, get off the streets or we're going to lock you up, that is not a sustainable approach to this crisis. I think we also need to look into reasons that some folks on the street are resistant to meeting the city up on offers of service. And it's important to recognize many of these folks have been in and out of the city's existing shelter system without being placed into longer-term housing, which is a threat to struts. I think that the city needs to focus on safely and securely expanding our shelter capacity, focusing on bed, getting folks off of streets and out of parks and into shelter where they can be connected with long-term security and wraparound services. And at that point, we can look into expanding our no-encampment return zones and help provide some security to neighborhoods that are, you know, investing and being part of the solution here. Thank you.
So the answer is, anyone who is unhoused but unsheltered can go on in prison. That's not the answer. That is not the solution. There is a happy medium between folks who are breaking the law and causing disruption, or fires that are causing real health problems here, and the other end of putting people in prison. Neither one is acceptable. What can we do? We can focus on shelter first and giving those folks the help that they need immediately and not later. We can't wait 21 years and we can't wait 44 years. We need to be able to get those folks a shelter and a help that they need through the services that can be operated throughout here on the grid.
With that, with that blanket statement, they will be arrested with revirations within a year. I think that what the proposal is. I would say no. I come from the custody background. We only have so many beds in jails up here. We don't have that many beds for legal, we don't. So it's, it's a ridiculous proposal to blanket and say they're going to jail. That, it just, it's just not going to happen. It just won't happen. So I think it's rhetoric and I, I appreciate their peers who's trying to solve and think out of the box. However, incarceration is not the place for mentally ill. But we do, I believe in compassion, but compassion with accountability. I do believe we can use zoning, zoning areas in South County. You can build an area where they can park RVs and they can get rehabilitation services, mental health services. We need to start to lobby the county, the state, and the feds to open up mental health facilities.
This whole housing crisis started probably in the 70s with Ronald Reagan, with our governor. And the city majority that was our Democrats. So Democrats and Republicans both have a lot to blame when they started tearing down the mental hospitals in California. With going without, the city can't just fix the problem of homelessness. It has to be affordable housing, but they have to be able to have a job to be able to buy a house. And we have to get housing down so they can afford it. If it's the third time, most people I've seen that are homeless, they're not just homeless because they lost their job. Most people I see that are homeless is because they're on drugs, they're drinking, and there's a mental disability with them. Those people, put them on a bus and get them the hell out of here. I don't care. Lock them up. I don't really care. I want them out of my house, out of my street. And I think most people feel like that. And if we're saying move them to a place where it's safe, you don't want them living next to you, you don't want them to live next to you, where are we going to put these people? That's the bottom line.
When I read and I heard about this today, I had a visceral reaction, quite frankly. I was jarring. I questioned, you know, what city I lived in, where I was at. I'm still kind of processing, honestly. No, absolutely not. We can't support this. It raises more questions than answers, quite frankly. And having worked with community and working with folks that are traumatized, the amount of trauma that this will continue to perpetuate is, is just beyond me. We already have an understaffed police department that has lagging response times and we want to now have them dealing with this. Are they going to be available to address violent crimes in our community? It clogs the ports. I mean, our public defender's office is already at capacity. So we're not even thinking about the actual implementation. The fact that the county hasn't even been consulted when they're the ones providing the social services, it's crazy. Now that's a good one.
And just keep in mind, and bear in mind, all the candidates, you have three total rebuttals.
Let's remember this. It's after three offers of service have been provided. When owed to a poor person to continuously deny services, which is happening honestly, aren't intended. If a person is, is danger to themselves and to the community around them, one of our alternatives we have is certainly to be accountable. The county, the state, and others play a role in ending the crisis. And the local, the city government is not for their lives, is it?
Thank you, Matthew. Any other rebuttals?
That was a pretty slick move there, Matthew. You changed the narrative right there. A danger to self, greatly disabled, a danger to others. That's called a 51-50 hole. You changed it, that's, yeah. There's a whole, another, another, another hole that is placed. So the mayor wasn't talking about that. But it is greatly disabled, danger to others, danger to self, which we can actually place an involuntary hold on that individual. So let's not change the narrative.
All right, so I'm going to randomize the order this time. This next question is, what steps would you take to make downtown cleaner, safer, and more vibrant? I am going to start with Adam this time.
So the steps I would take, again, public safety, number one. Get cleaned up, clean up our streets, work with the homeless population, and begin to get revenue into our city. How do we do that? We can do it many different ways. Again, public safety, we cannot cut the police department, the $12 million proposal. We cannot cut the police department. Help with our small businesses, help with entrepreneurship, incentivize them to come in and to come into our city with small interest loans, tax deferrals, and also mentorship programs with the big tech companies. So we want entrepreneurship, we want revenue into our areas, light situation. Start to mix up the residential as well as retail. Get stores, we got to get a grocery store. Bring back the Safeways. Bring back some clothing stores into District 3, okay?
Always, I would like to remind people that we need to stop relying on the federal fairy godmother because that spirit is being turned off. We are on our own, so we really have to do what is necessary for ourselves to take care of our businesses and to take down, take care of downtown. So I'd like to offer a sample of some programs that I think that you can use to jumpstart D3. First of all, some of you may have heard me suggest in Japantown that you can use a special use of this to help preserve your culture while attracting small businesses. I've also recommended that we use for Longview Bay Washington neighborhood, use them as a enterprise zone where we have city partnerships to increase economic activity there. We can do workforce training with San Jose State, more than just AI. We can focus on other industries. We can remove permanent barriers like we've experienced in Japantown or somebody's just trying to open a breakfast restaurant. And we can start a small business legal defense fund for folks that are struggling small businesses and low.
Just working in downtown and walking the streets and going in every business. Cleaning up downtown shouldn't be too hard. Fixing, cleaning the graffiti up, just cleaning the trash up. So I think the first thing, that's what really needs to be cleaned, is the streets and the trash so people can actually see that the city is attempting to actually clean the city up. After that, to make people feel safe. The first thing, we should not be cutting the police budget. We should be hiring more police officers. So you feel safe, you feel safe, we all feel safe. And when we see something, stop being afraid. Call the police and say, this is exactly what is going on. So the police can apprehend the person and put them in jail. Also, people need to follow that up. Call their district attorney and say, hey, this is what happened. We need them to be prosecuted and criminally charged to clean these streets up. It doesn't take just the city. It takes all of us together.
So downtown San Jose is going to thrive when we play to our strengths, quite frankly. And I think there are some things going right. And I, with a destination marketing background, I know, I know how to do that. And one of the things that's going right in our downtown is, one, the diversity. Our business corridors, we have food, we have entertainment, we have arts, we have culture. And I think that a lot of those arts and culture and, and small business vibrancy is what brings sales tax and what funds a lot of the critical services that we're all talking about right now. So I think investing in those kind of net multipliers, like arts and culture, is a path forward and one that I would definitely champion. Also, you know, we have Japantown, we have Sofa Market, we have some of our most Also, you know, we have Japantown, we have Sofa Market, we have some of our most thriving business corridors. And why they're thriving is because they have a great infrastructure, they have business associations. So help them build out their capacity to market and to do things in their business corridors.
In terms of increasing public safety, I think we need to start by staffing up SGBD, filling the 100 open vacancies and increase amongst our sworn police force, so that the police have the capacity to respond to calls and our community can trust that the police will be there when they actually need them. At the same time, I believe we need to invest in non-police first responder programs like the county's Trust Pilot. And especially in cases of severe mental health crisis, we can make sure that we're responding to the trained professional who will be able to de-escalate the situation and get folks connected to care. In terms of cleaning up downtown, I think we need to focus in on light, making sure that our code enforcement department has the tools and the resources to help make their property owners accountable, or they're not being good neighbors downtown. And in terms of vibrancy, I think it really comes down to two things, having people around and having things to do. We need to invest in our small business community to build vacant storefronts, invest in our downtown event and convention circuit, invest in our arts and cultural organizations, we need to invest in housing supply downtown to increase foot traffic and support all of our local businesses.
Talking to the small business owners, whether in the downtown core, like the Hennepin Willow or Unipark, they all say the same thing, make our neighborhood safer, make it fair, make sure we're adding police officers, and end the homelessness crisis that exists. The businesses that need to thrive want the same thing that our neighbors do. They want a community where customers can come regularly to their shops without grid 霸凌, without seeing the light that exists along the downtown core and other business core. And the city government focuses on the essentials, as any two homelessness that we build in the police department, we're both helping our neighborhoods and helping our small business partners. So by focusing on those core essentials of any homelessness and ensuring that we build in our police department, we can make sure downtown is somewhere that can thrive. On top of that, totally agree with Anthony, we need to build the housing that our downtown board needs and our small business needs to be assisted.
This next question has to do with San Jose's financial situation. What should San Jose do to close its budget shortfall and generate new revenue for city services? Anthony, we're gonna start with you.
Thank you. I think that longer term, you know, San Jose has some structural weaknesses in our budget that we're going to need to address. I think a prime opportunity here is for the city to reevaluate our business tax, which is structured in a much more regressive manner in some of our prior cities, and as a result brings in much less revenue. That means that small businesses are paying disproportionately more, while the largest corporations in San Jose are paying much less than in other cities. A study in 2016 showed that restructuring the business tax could bring in up to $40 million of additional revenue each year, which if we look at our current shortfall would nearly cover the majority of that shortfall. Outside of that, I would say that the city should focus on property taxes. Property taxes currently generate about 30% of revenue for the general fund, so if we could actually move the city forward with policies that encourage new housing construction and development, we can have more properties assessed at higher values, which will generate sustainable revenue that gets to come to support critical city services.
Sam Ricardo had a plan, I'm not a big fan of Sam Ricardo, obviously, but he had a plan to build 25,000 homes. And what Anthony was saying, building more housing, we need a lot more housing, we have a housing crunch. We should be getting with these developers and building these houses as fast as possible so we can sell them and start getting the property tax office, obviously. And we should build more places, kind of like the Target over there where the old train station was, where they have these big box companies that are coming in, they're adding tax revenue to the city of San Jose. We need more of that.
I'm not exactly bought into this idea that, like, as it relates to vibrancy in our downtown core, that less trash and more police is gonna equal vibrancy, and one equals the other. I think, I don't think there's a direct correlation there, I think that I obviously wanna be safe, and I'm a downtown employer, so I think about safety a lot. But I really think that we need to think differently, and especially with 2026 around the corner, we need to play to our strengths. We're an entertainment nighttime destination, and so let's lean into that. Let's have restaurants stay open later. Let's push for more sales tax and more retail. And I think that if we think really thoroughly on it, I think what we can drive revenue, not only from downtown residents but visitors, we need to make San Jose a destination, not just a pass through the city. And I think we are incredible enough to do that, we have enough diversity, we have enough food, we have enough culture here, to really make it that destination that's gonna drive revenue. Thank you.
Well, back to the budget. As an accountant, I really like budgets. But right now, San Jose has 98 core services and 264 supporting programs. We lack focus and efficiency, and as a result, our quality of life suffers. We need to limit our core services so we make better decisions. We have to focus on our core services and our equipment to be able to police and fire, parks, streets, traffic, emergency and early counseling. We can cut things and find where the redundancies are between San Jose and Santa Clara County. And while we can also cut in our own budgets, San Jose is doing stuff like, you know, they're giving $5 million to a nonprofit to purchase housing, and the housing is already providing affordable housing. So it doesn't make sense to be giving that money away when we're having a shortfall. I also recommend that we do zero case management or a department per year.
See, the trap we're asking the city to do is that this is our worst assumption. So that of course starts with the homelessness crisis that exists on the streets. I know you make the homelessness a lot, but being one of the top issues on the minds of voters and vice versa, it's an issue for investors. When investors come to our city and they look to provide dollars, whether it's for a high-rise housing development, or to purchase land, or to make a small business, and they see the homelessness crisis that exists on the streets, they say, you know what, we're gonna do it better, or maybe you'll invest in a little more support. We need to make the city a significantly clearer, make it more money. So by focusing on those core essentials, on any two homelessness that we build in our police department, we can make San Jose an attractive place to invest. Maybe 50,000 more jobs, 50,000 more jobs. I don't think 50,000 would take time for a tax on our businesses, knowing that we need to attract five more homelessness from the city just to provide the revenue that you have to save.
Definitely economic development, we need deregulation. We're over-regulated here. You were hearing that time and time again when you talked to business owners. We need to streamline the permitting process. It takes an act of God to add on to a house or to a business, so we need to streamline that process and not gonna take years, it could actually take weeks, not months, to get that rolling. Low interest loans for small businesses, grants for small businesses and entrepreneurs, collaborate with silicon tech companies, or mentorship programs to work with the small businesses. The continued tax breaks, tax incentives, tax deferrals for those in retail and develop come in and to want to invest in our city. And of course, if the crime is high, what happens, people don't talk about this, if the crime is higher, higher than the average, insurance is higher, so it makes the small business owner a lot more caught up to be able to pay for the insurance.
Irene, we're gonna start with you. Let me get the question. How would you restore trust with District Three residents after fallout from the scandal involved by Councilmember Omar Torres?
There is a big trust issue. Omar himself was quite a character. He had a lot of people's trust, people believed in him, and he held the aspirations for a lot of years. And so when this situation came up, it really hit folks like a death punch. And so when I'm knocking on doors now, what I hear is a lot of feariness, weariness of what's happening in our government. And they're asking questions, they wanna know all about residents, they wanna know about where the money's coming for the campaign, they wanna know about special interest influences. They're telling me that they don't believe that D3 is for sale, and that we should be focused on only what D3 wants, not what a bunch of special interests want from D3, which has happened to us in the past.
Thank you. I think it starts with how we run our campaigns. That's why I've been out there talking to residents and voters every single day, to make sure that folks know who I am, they know my values, and they feel like they have a sense of who I am and how I will govern before they head to the ballot box. Other main focus that I'm bringing in terms of restoring trust is about how to fund my campaign. I'm the only candidate in this race who is rejecting all donations from corporations and corporate lobbyists, because I wanna make sure that the residents of District Three know that I'm ready to go to that and go against them, not the special interests that so often dominate the discussion at City Hall. Thank you.
I agree with Anthony. I'm not waiting to be elected to rebuild trust or to unstone trust. I'm also leveraging the trust that I built in this community over the last 20 years. I've been a person that's been out there, that's been on the Voice, that's been engaged in tons of partnerships, I've led a nonprofit agency, I have delivered results to thousands of city residents, so I think my track record speaks for itself, and I really lend a lot of that credibility and trust that I built in this community and with many of you out there, leveraging that as well as making sure that I'm listening and I'm out there knocking on doors, my family's out there knocking on doors, you all get to meet my son, you all get to meet my dad, you all get to meet my mother. This is where I come from. My parents are home educators, they have dedicated their lives to public service, and I'm continuing that legacy, and I'm making sure to instill that same legacy in my son who's here tonight, and making sure that we continue to foster trust within our community because I hold public office in high regard. Thank you.
I wanted to congratulate the fellow candidates. This is a big part of your story, trust. I participated in this, actually, a lot of it. The next step, folks, is making sure our neighborhood associations are a key part of rebuilding our trust. Something I have been doing for the past several years is working with our neighborhood associations, the out there friends over there. And throughout the city, we make sure that the living services are full of dessert, and we build more proximity neighborhood associations. So Grand Cispar, the other, the other, since we've taken, is a major champion for our neighborhood associations, especially in the heart. And when we have our neighborhood associations utilizing vehicles like the District Three Community Division Council, we have the opportunity to build a bridge between City Hall and our community. That is something I focus on as a council member. Something we can do some more is making sure that we're going out into the neighborhood for, as a council member, I would make sure to build a staff that is comprised of neighbors from the District Three area, and making sure we're going out into the community, not with the neighborhood system.
So trust is built on accountability with the city. There's no accountability. And as a voter, I distrust the city, I distrust the mayor, I distrust the city council. With me is, this is what you see is what you get. You know, elected, I'm going to talk to every single one and keep talking to every single one, because that's what I do normally, that is my normal everyday job, is talking to every business, going in and out of every business. So for me, it's a comfortability factor for me is, I need to go talk to people, I need to understand what they're feeling, even when I'm on the 18th floor making decisions. I need to understand how it's gonna impact you and your family, what's going on. If I can see what's going on the street, it's easier to help. Also, in my campaign, I haven't taken $1 from anybody, it is just basically me myself against the world. So I don't even have to take money from a super PAC or anything like this guy's taken, but it's just nothing, nobody's given me nothing.
Think about me, I come from, again, a law enforcement background, trust is everything, integrity is everything, accountability is everything. Those three put together, over half my life has been in that environment, and I'm gonna bring that to District Three. And how do I do that? Well, meeting with, not allowing, the residents are busy, they don't need to come to City Hall. City Hall needs to come to you. And by going to the different associations, by going to the neighborhoods and having meetups and building that trust, one person at a time, I'm not beholden to anyone, any unions, any tech companies. I was shocked when a couple of candidates had a couple hundred thousand within days of announcing their candidacy. I'm like, where does all that money come from? I was shocked. But I'm very thankful for the opportunity to serve the community 100%. Beholden to no one else but D3 and the city of San Jose.
All right, anybody I didn't call on for this question, I kinda lost that.
Keep going.
And before we go on, I just wanna stir the pot a little. Any rebuttals? There are cognizant three rebuttal winners. This next question is, what's a recency council vote you agreed with and one in which you would have voted differently? Yeah, we haven't started the new allowance. I think we're gonna go in this order.
So I would have been the one sole vote on the billboards, and I think that upon reflection, I would have been okay with that, because as I've been out talking to residents, majority of residents, I actually met one resident that wanted them, quite frankly. So I, you know, I think that that would have been okay, and I would have been okay with that, being the one sole vote and representing the will of the people in District Three. And so upon retrospect, I think, you know, that's one that I just would have gone another way. Obviously, I would have voted for and of course been a huge proponent of, you know, San Jose remaining a welcoming and immigrant friendly city. I think standing with the colleagues, with the mayor, with, you know, with everyone on that one, I would have been, again, just a huge proponent of it, and I think that our local level is our last line of defense. Some of the things that are happening at the federal level are permeating here in our own city, and so we need to stand up and make sure that we're standing strong to make sure that immigrants and Indians are protected.
I would have voted totally yes for the billboards. I did see there was a problem. After we left the Catholic Charities forum, the next day, I think, was San Jose Spotlight came out with how the labor unions were coming in and giving the San Jose City Council money, basically just corruption right there, pay to play. I thought to myself, like, well, they should be charged, you know, to get a pay to play like that. They basically turned their back on the residents of District Three and the rest of San Jose. That part got me fueled up and pissed off, and I just thought to myself, maybe I should have stopped and thought to myself, if I was a council member, put it in the back of my pocket and think about it, maybe a no vote would have been the best thing.
Not so much a vote, but it was a vote. Clock 36, how I was very thankful that Council, the mayor, voting for Clock 36 and running against, actually, Governor, on that Governor Newsom, which basically holds people accountable and stops and slows down the smash and grabs, and it begins to beat offenders, holding them accountable. And so I'm very thankful for that, and that's one thing I would say that I would have learned of them. Other things, not so much, like the billboards, I was open to it. It depends where we put them at, if it brings in revenue over time, I'm open to it. What I'm not open to is higher taxes. So we need to find out how we bring in more revenue without disrupting the community.
In 2023, I started working against the billboards. In January 2024, I wrote a very large, lengthy article about the electronic billboards, compared their sizes to basketball courts and what they would look like by the performance arts center. So I would definitely have voted no against the electronic billboards because that's what we wanted. There was a survey done in 2021 and 2022.
There was a survey done in 2021 and 2022 that said we clearly do not want the electronic billboards and that the entire city council refused to listen to us. In terms of something that I would have said yes for, a little controversial, but I would have agreed with you directly, measure and funding because I'm out of those encampments a lot and I cannot look at their faces and their eyes and tell them, no, you have to wait, how many more untended people can get some sort of shelter, etc. So I do vote yes to the opposite, and I agree.
I also want to talk about billboards this evening. But one thing I want to highlight is that if you look at the way the vote broke out, it was unanimous. So unlike some other folks on this mission, I would not be looking to just vote no on this in a symbolic manner. I want to look for solutions that can actually improve the project and deliver some positive benefit to the people of District Three. Also, I would have looked to make a governing coalition with other members of the city council to establish guidelines to prevent the proliferation of additional billboards outside of downtown into our residential neighborhoods. Before the billboards, the council did approve, I would have focused on adding a memo to redirect the revenue from those billboards back into investment in District Three in a period that the community gets putting up with them in the first place. Beyond that, in terms of a vote that I would agree with, it would be the residential high-rise streamlining program that the city recently put into place. But I would have tried to strengthen that program to make it also inclusive of downtown given that downtown is our most resourceous area and should be at the center of new housing construction in San Jose.
Since this is coming around billboards, how I state that I've been opposed to billboards is something Mayor Matt, Mayor Matt, you know, I disagree with him. Something I disagree with Mayor Matt on is on the billboard. I would have voted no, would have been proud to be a sole vote, no on that. And we're wanting to partner with neighborhoods, which I think we do sometimes. The part of therapy that I'm a council member now, how he puts up my neighborhood associations, ensuring they have a stronger presence at the council meeting and we're working with neighborhood associations in other districts to accomplish the board of council members voting. I think that's how you make change happen at City Hall. And I think that maybe you would enjoy it on a wide enough. A vote that's coming up to the future ball of this is the Mark budget, something I would be calling, something that is going to be released this year. If your mayor sets the direction for the budget to point toward the neighborhood, then what your vote for is an empty street home association that may not be used at the time and any of the black that exists, Dr. Aaron County, Dr. Sue, in time for the intention to be important votes and for a landmark campaign to be taken.
So in my current role, I focus on work force development for women in particular. And one of the things that we try to instill in folks is that you can be a change wherever you are, no matter your title or, you know, your position. And so one of the things I wanted to rebuttal was that, you know, if the billboards thing was such a big issue and you are leading neighborhood services, I mean, you could have, in that instance, been able to engage the neighborhoods in that effectively, so.
All righty. I'm going to go to the audience questions, just to get as many. Well, we have to do the next card here. Do you have questions for your candidates? There's a man, somebody will try and get the next card for you. Let's find out what that means. So we're going to start with Philip on this one. Given that a portion of the unhoused are the working poor who lost their housing due to rent increase for a medical issue, one, do you support rent control? And two, would you support a repeal of Costa-Hawkins that admits municipal rent control to buildings built before 1975? This is Philip.
I'm not too sure about that 1975, that Costa-Hawkins. I have to learn more, study more about that. Rent control, there are some parts of San Jose that do have rent control. My first apartment, I lived by myself, actually, when I was a young man, did have rent control. I didn't have to worry about the rent control at the time. Building a new development and insisting there should be rent control there, I don't think that is a good idea at all, no. I pretty much think the rent control that we have now in the areas that we're in, I think we should just kind of leave it as it is.
As far as rent control, I'm all over. Kind of guy left the market dictate. However, I think we have a lot of regulations in place that do control currently in this city, the rent. As far as the 1975, not familiar, we go to repeal something that happened about 50 years ago. So, but however, if there's some bad actors, they need to be held accountable. And that includes landlords and that includes tenants. So on both ends of the spectrum, people need to be held accountable. Whether, again, bad actors on both sides, the landlords aren't all bad actors and all the tenants aren't bad actors. We need to come to a, basically, a happy medium whereas the owner can't just all of a sudden 90% rent next month. Obviously, we have regulatory rules in place to control that. I think it's sufficient for now, but I'm into regulation all day long.
Thank you. I would say that I support San Jose's existing rent stabilization ordinance that applies to older housing stock. And I also support some recent state legislation passed in 2019 which applies rent stabilization to units that are over 15 years old on a rolling window. That said, I don't support expanding rent control to new construction because I view that as something that would cause a huge impediment to building the housing we desperately need in our communities. If you look at data from the state, San Jose needs to build 62,000 new units of housing for the next eight years. And if we are suddenly placing limits on rent for those new constructed buildings, it's going to act as an impediment to construction of that housing. We also know that there are bad faith actors, anti-housing cities and other parts of the state that would latch on to this authority to impose rent control on new construction and twist it in order to prevent any new housing from being built in their cities. And that is going to just increase the burden of our housing affordability crisis on good faith cities like San Jose.
In the current district, where over half of our residents are renters, I think this is a very important issue for the representative to be able to talk through and talk about. I think the one thing I'll also say is rents are astronomical. We know that with commercial and housing. I will also say this as somebody who has renters. I've been a renter, I'm now a homeowner. And so it's something that I myself would consider and make sure that, yes, I am in support of expanded rent control. The other thing is, is there needs to be an engagement process. If we're going to repeal anything that's on the books, that means that it went through an entire process of engagement and bringing stakeholders around the table. So I don't have an answer right now, but what I will say is that I'm committed to every option being on the table considering housing affordability is incredibly challenging issue in this district in particular. So again, it's on the table, but I would definitely want to have landlords and tenants and policymakers and everyone involved. Thanks.
Well, we need to, it's a simple analogy. You have a supply, you don't have enough housing and you're going to owe the rent so too much. Right, this is very, a lot of it is imperative process in which we felt, when they come to City Hall, try to get an apartment up in there, it's obstacle to City Hall. There are processes in the future. I want to make sure that City Hall is able to get any kind of ability to get more projects up in there, knowing that everybody thinks the real estate challenge, not only at the local level, controlling what the city can provide, the streamlined permitting, but at the federal side, you just have tariffs that are passing that are going to be increasing the cost of construction, increasing costs on building, and also increasing costs on many other things. On the city side, there's the ability to control the rent. That's building up housing in the city, that's making it possible to do that.
So San Jose's rent control is at 5%. And there are only 25% of the apartment stock in San Jose under rent control, 25%. And the owners of that 25% are mom and pops because, quite frankly, no self-respecting developer is going to own a building that was built in 1979 that has rapid plaster, now the tube. They're just not going to own that. So these are mom and pop owners. So I don't recommend expanding this rent, any more rent control in San Jose. And Costa-Hawkins has a lot more complications just than putting more rent control on additional new buildings. We've seen that rent control really has not impacted the pricing of housing or the price of rents. It hasn't been impactful. It doesn't help a single mom right now get an apartment. It helps if she gets that apartment and ten years from now prices go up, but it doesn't help today.
We're going to start with Matthew for this next question. If I can find it. Oh, here we go. This one is from a member of the audience. I live in downtown. During events, during evenings, people are on the streets. During the day, I don't see anyone. Restaurants and businesses are empty. Streets are empty. What would you do to bring more people to the streets during the daytime hours and weekends? So Matthew?
We've said it a couple times tonight, even houses, we need more housing. A big draw in some businesses opening up in downtown for Mayor City Hall is thanks to Mayor. Mayor Towers opened up. Mayor Sankar underprizes opening in that core area on 47th and Mayor. Really bring that's housing that makes sense in downtown. We're transit and we attract businesses and we attract others to come to the bike and traffic. So the policy I would be thinking is expanding housing and building more in downtown core. I love the part from San Jose City University, who built a wonderful type, largest library in western Mississippi, a landmark project in 1960. This is United Land Transit Company, partnering with San Jose City and offering public housing now with students from residents across the city downtown. Another highlight that I want to emphasize is making sure we're moving downtown safely. We're guarding the businesses, we're guarding the workers, we're guarding the property. The small businesses are making more and they're getting safer. We want the best for the community.
Sometimes I struggle with this question myself, actually. Sometimes I'm working late at night, it's going to be seven, eight o'clock at night and it's Thursday and downtown is empty as all can be. And I'm wondering, like, where are all these people? Most of these people are going to Santana Road, Palo Alto, Campbell, you name it, where they, you know, they just feel safer. It's a smaller environment. For myself, I think, you know, there's a, online is called San Jose Foods, if you've ever seen it, Foods. They did a great thing with City Hall downtown and they attracted more than 10,000 people. I think we need more of these online presence and people throwing festivals or on a Thursday night, there's a beer festival or a Vietnamese late night where everybody can come out and, you know, shop and a little more things like that that attract people into the core of downtown. And I think that really helps out because people say they were there. They want to bring their friends, they want to bring their family.
Thank you. You know, San Jose has had one of the better recoveries of any major downtown post-COVID. It's also been a very uneven recovery, as fresh as it says. Our nights and weekends are doing great in terms of activation, but day traffic is very sleepy still. So I think Matthew was right, we need to focus on building more housing downtown. That's critical in terms of transitioning the future of our downtown away from just being a pure business district. We need more of a 24/7 hub of housing, arts, culture, recreation and hospitality. I think we should also look at all the government agencies to play here. ETA recently announced that they're moving their headquarters downtown. Once that process is complete, that'll be over 1,000 workers who are now coming into downtown every day and then activating the local economy. Longer term, we need to look at drawing additional investment of arts and culture as well as new businesses downtown. And a huge asset that will help with that process is bringing art downtown, which you can see from other cities is a huge point of activation for traffic and putting new folks easily into our city.
Art, you know, there's quite a bit already in downtown that is activated. We've got some world-class restaurants. We've got great downtown music and lots of events. So why don't we see people? I think the common complaint I get is that the workers haven't come back to the office. And I don't think that we complain to the workers. I think that we, that the workers are a bit driven and we have to pay them and allow them to have the flexibility to work from wherever. But what else, what else is it that we can do? I think we have to work on our reputation. Our reputation as being the better, safer community. And that draws more people. I remember talking to some folks, overhearing them talking in a coffee shop in Saratoga. And they said, oh, San Jose, where comes San Jose? And I said, yeah. And so, oh, we could never go here. How do we rapidly reuse those spaces? How do we turn them into housing? They've already been built. It's like we're beating a dead horse. I think we really need to let go of this commercial daytime. Like, things are changing, the world is changing. We need to be a leader, not a follower in that.
Testing.
I believe we can improve infrastructure, enhance access, parking, public transit options to make downtown more attractive for retailers and shoppers. So you have to have, why wouldn't they come to downtown? What's available during the daytime here? And I believe that we can provide hosted events, more festivals to increase foot traffic and attract retailers that people are out in about. So if we do that, it'll attract more people and culture is contagious. People will start to come here as we increase the foot traffic market, having hosted markets, market advanced festivals and that sort of thing. Downtown, the parks, it's clear the parks from the situation we've all seen for the past several years. And the playground not too far from here, I've never seen a kid play on it. So we need to get the families back, that San Jose is open for business downtown.
This next question is going to go to Adam first. And it's about democracy. The practice of democracy is more important than ever as it is currently being dismantled. How will you improve civic engagement and participation in San Jose? Adam, we're starting with you.
Well, this is a perfect example. Host events like this, hosting events like this, meeting leagues, getting people, getting people engaged civically. To be honest with you, growing up on the east side, I never even knew they had anything like this, anything like it. And so I was out of touch, out of reality, and my whole family was as well and those around me were as well. So civic engagement, getting the message out there, the neighborhood associations, and that the city leaders should be coming out to the neighborhoods. You shouldn't disrupt your schedule for city leaders. City leaders should come to you and do this, not one time a year, two times a year, but on a continuous basis. That going to the schools and talking with the children, going into your events, going into the festivals, going into them, all the different events that we have and let it be known. Again, San Jose is open for business. We're stronger together. We have more common than the things we have than the things we don't.
Well, I know we're looking at the difficulties at the federal level, but I want to focus on local because I feel like I have more of an impact there. I have more of a chance there. So when I look at local, it is also a little bit discouraging also because we're talking about how do we get policy changes done at San Jose City Hall? And lots of folks talk about, well, we need to have a coalition. We need to have a group of people that agree on the city council and get something done. And that's great if it's good policy. But if it's bad policy, that's not a great distinction to have. And here's a list of bad policies that have been voted on in San Jose that I'd like to hear how you can change, starting with the electronic billboards. The complete elimination of public appearance on every bill. Complete elimination, eliminating of parking requirements. And of course, the focus on housing first will be costing millions of dollars and people are still suffering on the streets.
Democracy means to me, it's a little weird. My seven-year-old son, we have an American flag. I put up an American flag in front of my house and I honored that to my dad. And I honor that to my dad. He was serving in war and was occupied in Japan. My son always, he looks at me and says, "Dad, you know, the neighbor has an American flag. They have the American flag. You have the neighbor has the flag over there." And I said, "Yes." And he goes, "Well, they're fighting for America like us." And he says, "The, the, what about the rest of the people on the block? They don't have American flags." And I said, "Okay." And he says, "Well, they're not fighting for America." Democracy is, we all here, we all need to fight.
We all need to keep coming together.
We all need to keep telling our neighbors and our neighbors that are not registered voters, we need to go to them and get them registered and get them involved in stuff like this. I admit, I've never been into anything like this, but now just being in this, I start to understand. Everybody needs to be involved in this to get democracy going the right way.
So as we all know, democracy is expensive. Our city has invested over $5 million to have this special election. And I think what that, what that says is, one, it's worth it. It's more than worth it, right? And it's worth so much that I have bought my entire career for expansion of democracy. I think the question is for me, how have I increased civic participation and expansion of democracy for the city of San Jose? Whether that was my agency hosting voter hubs, voter education. I've invested in leadership pipelines so that people can get connected to government. People can get connected to sitting on boards and commissions, getting involved in civic life. I think it's, it's completely worth the investment and I don't have the way to become a city council member to do that work. I've been doing that work over the last decade and a half. And I will continue to do that work as a city council member to make sure that people are civically engaged and to have the right guidelines to do so.
A serious statistic is, out of 37,000 registered voters in this district, only 10,000 are expected to show up on election. And already have a huge amount of trust in our democracy, even at the local level. What we need to do is we need to deliver results at City Hall. We need to hand the items to the street homeless and to go in our police department and show an impact that you all can see and experience in your neighborhood. When we do that, you will understand that government is working for you, responding to you, and doing things that you expect and deserve. That is what I believe as a council member and as a candidate for this race. And that's what we need to do at City Hall. Remove the need, but we have to go faster to solve the problem, remove the homelessness in our neighborhoods. I believe if we continue to do that also by working with our neighborhoods. Working with our neighborhoods and building that trust, I believe if we continue to hold our government and we continue to enable this distribution and encouraging them.
To protect democracy and encourage civil engagement at the local level, we really need to make sure that we're making city government as accessible as possible. That means focusing on translation services so all members of our community can participate. It means having things like childcare, again, so that everyone can participate. And it means that the city is long overdue in returning virtual participation in city forums so that folks don't have to trek out to City Hall in order to have their voice heard. I also think that it means that we need to make sure that we are representing every community in our city. I've knocked doors in some of the more economically challenged communities in District 3, and I've heard warnings from voters that they don't feel like our elected officials care as much about their concerns as they do about the concerns of the county park and the local area. I think that we need to have leaders who are prioritizing representing every community and every citizen in San Jose so that we can have all of our residents having a voice in the debate. Thank you. And then we start with you. Rank choice voting, yes or no? Yes, I'm a big proponent of ranked choice voting. It is part of my platform. You know, we can look at the data here and see that ranked choice voting leads to more equitable outcomes and tends to be associated with more positive campaigns with less mudslinging. And it can also be a huge costing for our city. This actually came up when City Council was evaluating this special election. There was a question, can we avoid a costly runoff here by using instant runoff voting? But our city charter does not allow that today. So I'm hopeful that the current $5 million that we're spending on this election will hopefully renew some ongoing discussions about adopting ranked choice voting here in San Jose. It was actually one of the recommendations that came out of the charter review commissioned several years ago with City Council, for whatever reason, chose not to act on. So on council, I would be a proponent for ranked choice voting as a way to increase representation and improve the efficiency of our election process. Thank you.
So, yes, I've been actually a leading voice on this issue since 2020, when it first came up to council many years ago. You can also catch more details in an op-ed that was put into the Mercury News that I wrote six months ago about ranked choice voting. And again, I think it leads to a lot more, better elections, better campaigning, a lot more positive campaigning. I think that there's beyond just the choice. I think that it really fosters a sense of community and not having to pick one person or another. Really being able to rank folks yours first and second and third choice because, you know, not everyone is just with one person. So I think that there is incredibly, there's a lot of great, great things and outcomes that come out of ranked choice voting. And so, yes, I'd be a big proponent and I have been for a very long time.
I'm open to it. I've been learning more and more about ranked choice voting than I think. What I found is, as I mentioned earlier, and only 10,000 people give a vote in the election, 47,000 of us should vote. If you have a voting initiative, you have to encourage people to participate more. I think when folks are educated about the process and understand the thing, I think it could be a good avenue on the fiscal side of things. Because the cost of, and saving our government money on elections, that can be expensive. And then on the process, I think it does streamline it a little bit more. So open to the process.
To you, to get the voter count and the voter turner off.
A couple years ago, I studied with two Stanford professors who were focused on democracy and how it can, how it can work. It was very fascinating. They brought a bunch of Democrats together and a bunch of Republicans together and they put them in a room and they made them work together. And one of the things they came up with was ranked choice voting. So I was really curious as to how it would work and how people would, would be, feel to be, uh, privileged feeling. I have some concerns about it right now because of our situation with trust. So I want to make sure that the public feels that this is something that they, a system that they can trust. And I also want to look at where there are actual examples that have been used. Because I have looked at one example that I didn't like at all, where everything could be manipulated by special interests. So I think that the studies are still out there and I want to know a little bit more about actual examples of folks who are using.
I'm going to agree with that. I believe that more studies need to be implemented to figure out if that would be a good avenue. I, right now, I would say no. But I'm open to learning more about it. And I don't like special interests, how they come in right away and begin to manipulate new processes. And so I believe right now, I'm, I'm open to it. However, I need to know more about it, to be honest with you.
Couple people talked about the special interests when it would come to the ranked choice voting. You know, it's very simple. If you want to get the special interests out, every city council member running for a city council seat should have to self-fund themselves and there should be a cap of $20,000. And they should not be able to take $1 from anybody. Make them get on their feet, get out there and go door to door. That is problem solving something.
I've been told two more questions for the team. Is that still the plan? Okay. Well, this next one, we're going to start with Irene. This, this question was originally for Matthew. But name one to two, and I just want to distribute from both first equally. Name one to two things that you would do differently than Mayor Mayor Matt.
Let's start with shelter. Mayor Matt really likes, in turn, shelter. And that involves tiny homes. I really like large, complicated community shelter. Because that shelter can be done right away and made at much lower cost. We can do it for $20,000 to $30,000 per bed. It'd be a total of $110 million for 5,500 people. For tiny homes, we have an actual amount of 175 per bed for the Guadalupe Shelter tiny homes. That would be $1 billion for 5,500 people. So that is where Matt and I differ. Because I think that if we can save money upfront for the short term, we can start funding other projects for long-term affordable housing that needs the AMI for middle and lower income.
Interesting. Great question. First and foremost, I would focus on being a council member. And the council member represents the residents and then just their neighbor. And making sure no matter who else or what else says what or pushes forward a policy, and you're representing your constituency, that is the job of a council member. So first and foremost, as the elected leader to the District 3 office, I would work with any council member who wants to solve problems or make it their homelessness. I mean, our municipal apartment can make sure we clean up the bank. But in items where the residents want me to vote in opposition, even if that's the bill board or another item, I would stand with my district. Even if the mayor's on the opposing side of that, I will stand with my residents to make sure that they don't all represent a council. Because I think that is the job of a council member. Another item that separates the area and I think it's crucial for our District 3 candidate is transportation. My background largely is in transportation causing and helped champion many of the transportation causes that.
Yeah, I think one thing that is definitely a strength of mine is partnership and collaboration amongst the agencies. As somebody who has worked with different levels of government in terms of my own agency, I think I would approach our partnership or perceived partnership with the county a lot different. And I think that we need to be more proactive in co-creating strategies and plans because if the city has one strategy and the county has another, that's not a great use of resources in terms of leveraging each other's strengths and each other's resources. And so I think that I would definitely approach the issue of working with our county and our state in a very different way. I would say a lot more productively collaborative to be able to share some outcomes. That would be very helpful. And then also, again, I think just with the recent news, like I said, I had a visceral reaction to having, you know, arresting homeless folks and looking at as that really being a solution. I, I just vehemently disagree with that.
I don't agree with the mayor when it comes to temporary housing. That's money. It's not working, obviously. Can't fix things fast enough and people do not want them to be in the area where they're living. But I do think we need to, like Gabby kind of said, lean Santa Clara. But I think we need to take a step further and lean on our congressmen and our senators and lean on our governor there and really lean on those, what we need to push out, what the mayor is trying to do. But I do agree with the mayor rescuing people though.
In solving the homeless crisis, I, I believe that we haven't yet got to the root of the problem. We think it's just a putting a roof over somebody's head. We think it's just, hey, if they got a place to stay, they're going to be fine. No, they're not going to be fine. If a person's in a mental health crisis or an addiction state, putting somebody up, putting a roof over their head and leaving them in that state is not compassionate. It's not compassionate. We need to start, and he has not as of yet, I have heard something, but we need to start to lobby the city, the county, the state, the feds to open up mental health facilities again. It's got to happen. Otherwise, we're going to be in the same position next year, in five years, in 10 years. Hey, how do we solve this problem? Rehab centers, mental health facilities, we need to start that today.
Thank you. The first major difference I'd call out here would be my approach to Measure E spending. You know, we were just talking about democracy and trust in democracy. And there's currently a proposal in the budget negotiations that is looking to permanently divert Measure E dollars away from affordable housing construction. That is not what voters voted on when they chose to take on a new tax in 2020. And I think that there's nothing more you can do to decrease trust in our democracy than ignoring the will of the voters. Beyond that, I would say that I would attempt to have a better relationship with the unions in our city. City San Jose has thousands of unionized employees who are really the backbone providing city services. And during the budget negotiations a few years ago, during contract negotiations, I didn't appreciate some of the rhetoric coming out of the mayor's office that attempted to pit residents against our city staff. You know, we have staffing shortages in San Jose and we are immensely dependent on our staff to deliver services to our residents, but I don't think that's appropriate. We are running late, but we have requests for one more question. I'm going to keep it very quick. It shouldn't take any more than 10 seconds to answer. What's your favorite place in District 3? Adam, quickly.
I would say, oh, gosh, the Japanese restaurants or the penthouse. I can't get the name. I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
Right now, it's home with my son and my mom.
Freshen the community in our district area.
It's home with my three cats and two dogs, one of which I just rescued from Columbus Park.
I would say our beautiful, beautiful arts and cultural district, God, so fun.
I'll just go to five spots since I just sharpened their knives the other day.
Give it up for our E3 candidates. A recap story will be published on our website next week. If you're not already, please subscribe to the Daily Spotlight newsletter to stay up to date on all the news in San Jose. And if you enjoy programming like this, please consider our nonprofit journalism with a monthly or annual recurring donation in any amount on our website at sanoseespotlight.com. Thank you.